Village of Williamsville Planning and Architectural Review Board. Would everyone stand to me and say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And could we have a call please?
Okay. Member Liker?
Here.
Pacer?
Here.
Petroselli?
Here.
Stone?
Yeah.
Vidco?
Here.
Waterman Culpa?
Here.
Greco? Kepert?
Here.
Beck? Palumbo? And Liaison Haan?
Here.
Thank you very much. First on the agenda is approval of the February 3rd, 2025 minutes. We'll have discussion, any corrections? One has been noted. I was not the chairperson at last month's meeting. If you could please indicate that Wes was the chair. Anyone else have any other comments or corrections for those minutes?
I do. Traffic and safety, just recorrect, did not review the site plan. For at 27 West Spring. Because, yeah, the applicant submitted, yeah, as I thought I said last month. Yeah, submitted paperwork which indicated there wouldn't be any traffic. And as such, traffic and safety did not review it. Yeah. Really wasn't the traffic.
Okay.
Safety issue.
Any other comments? Seeing none, then do I have a motion to approve the February 3rd, 2025 minutes as amended?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
My seconds, all favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Moving on to the first item under Old Business, which is the historic marker at 5712 Main Street. Do we have someone here to present?
Good evening, gentlemen of the board, back to the development. Um, due to the conversation, we have just come up with based on some input and then some additional verbiage. So this would be what the marker would look like, kind of taking the example from the other marker within the building. We would provide it and then the thought being the landscaping bag, it pretty much centered in the middle of the building. The floor was saying about two feet off the sidewalk. It's attractive, but still where it's easily read. So this is what we were proposing to meet the condition of approval for the Sweets or the original building.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, comments?
Is it parallel with the street or perpendicular?
It would be parallel. So if you're standing on the sidewalk and looking at it, you can read that just as there is.
And it's one sided or two sided?
Uh, we were proposing it to be one sided, just the city of the public, facing the public sidewalk. Yes.
Facing the sidewalk?
Correct, facing the public sidewalk, yes. So if anyone's walking down Main Street, then they would be coming by the building and they would be seen.
Okay, so Wes and I were on the Historic Preservation Commission, I think, at the time. Um, so we reviewed the material, where it was gotten from. It's designed, in my opinion, absolutely wonderful. Thank you for doing this. We do just have a couple of more updates for the verbiage. So I'm going to hand this to you and explain. So these asterisks are where we would like additional information. So here, it's written right here on the back. So here once stood dot dot dot, the Benjamin Miller residence, built circa 1850. And then we'll take out that first line and just capitalize T. The corner of Main and North allocus streets became a major center of social business and political activity in Lansville. Another asterisk. Benjamin Miller served as the first president of the newly incorporated Village of Williamsville, capitalized, in 1850. And then among the friends who visited the Miller's house. I'm going to ask him if I can make a copy of that. Does it text a little bit, add a little more and um?
And then we'll also just email it back in as well, just so you guys can take another look at it, just to make sure.
Sure, sure. They can email to us and then um. I actually took pictures and I'm just going to email it out, but. Okay, sure. Um, so then.
Can just a clarification, we have to come back to the board or?
No, no.
If, if, if.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we could spell proof it for them.
Exactly, exactly. I'd just rather make sure it's double checked rather than putting it up here and like, didn't quite, didn't quite get it right.
But, but that verbiage, that's a sign that's going to get approved tonight, I assume. Um, so then I'll make a motion to approve the historical marker as modified at tonight's meeting for 5712 Main Streets. Um, per its original, as part of the original condition for the building of the, um, the building that is currently at the corner of North allocus and Main Streets. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Who seconded?
And I guess for clarification, the applicant did indicate it will be two feet from the edge of sidewalk in the.
Yeah, yeah, well, yes, within the plant, yes, two feet off the edge of sidewalk.
Yep.
That should be about one foot three on the wall.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the second piece under Old Business. Yeah, 2025 PB02 for 27 Main Streets, first by plan review.
Good evening. Dave Sutton from Sutton Architecture, here this evening to present 27 West Spring Street. Uh, with me this evening is Andy Bosker, who is owner and prospective tenant or occupant of the building. We've been in front of this board several times now. First time being November of 2024 for sketch plan review. We had an opportunity to present this project to this board, got a lot of really good input. Also sent us to the zoning board of appeals. And for the record, Chipping noted that we were appeared in front of the zoning board of appeals, got a special use permit, which would allow for the use that's being proposed to occur in this building. And we also did a follow-up meeting with the zoning board of appeals and got four variances. And for the record, those variants are a reduction of parking spaces. And that was approved, which includes two exterior parking spaces and two interior parking spaces. Might be a little bit unusual for a site plan to involve interior parking spaces. But they're designated parking spaces within the building. One of the criteria for the zoning board of appeals approval is that the two spaces remain parking spaces and never be converted into usable space. The concern on their part would be that that would be converted and it wouldn't trigger a re-review. And we've agreed that we are going to designate the garage area of the parking spaces to be classified as parking. Any attempt to convert that into habitable space or space other than parking would trigger some type of reapproval, review from this board as well as the zoning board of appeals. Also, we had requested, there was some uncertainty in clarification as to whether the building would be allowed to be one story. There is an existing two-story building on the property. Uh, but just for point of clarification, we did request a variant as a second, the addition, rather, be of one story in nature. The primary reason for that is the adjacent property. If we were to do a two-story structure, we would actually build our building in front of their previously established windows on the property line. And an attempt to be a good neighbor, as well as be compliant to fire codes and other, uh, other items. We proposed a single story and that was approved through a variance. And the last variance at that evening meeting was a reduction in height from the required of the first floor, meaning to be 15 feet in height. Once again, those windows are limiting us. We are limited to 13.5 feet in height to get to the underside of that sill and put the flashing in there. So we were approved all of those variances at the February 19th meeting with the zoning board of appeals of the Village of Williamsville. So today we are looking for final approval for site plan as well as architectural review. Some of the notable items that have been brought up in prior meetings were a sidewalk on Grove Street. If you look at the revised plans, we have introduced that sidewalk and proposed for it to be alongside the building. We know that there may be some complications with this, but we are willing to install our portion of that sidewalk and hopes that it will continue up to Main Street. And basically be a really crucial part of reviving the streetscape and the neighborhood in this area. As you can see through the plan, we also are proposing that sidewalk to continue along West Spring Street, having a defining characteristic for pedestrian safety. And that has been noted on the plans revised as well as the landscaping that was adjusted for, we have, I think, actually one of the other items. I'm sorry, I'm going to back that a little bit here. On February 19th, we're also giving variances because requirement states that all parking areas must be a 10-foot buffer from the public right-of-way, which is Grove Street. And we got a variance to reduce that to four feet in light of the restrictions on site and the requirement for the handicap aisle. So once again, variances have all been received. The site plan has been reviewed a couple of times by this board. And we're here looking for final approval. The nature of the business is to be a carpenter shop and design center as well as a single unit apartment on the second floor, which is currently existing and is to remain. As far as the site plan goes, we were able to get all the approvals from the engineer as well as all the various departments. And they're represented on the most up-to-date site plan. I'd be glad to answer any additional questions on the site plan. And I believe this board might want to review the site plan and architectural review separately. So I can hold off on talking about the architectural after any questions might be received regarding the site plan.
Okay, I'm C1. Site plan. In front of the garages on either side, there's a semi-circular area, it's kind of a plank, the garages and. Those are reading to me as curbs. Is that what those are?
Yeah, they are actually, based on the elevations, I don't think they can be curbs. We're talking about a sidewalk, which is a material delineation. And we can further accentuate those, um, those, those designations, maybe with some striping of some sort. But curbing is not going to be an option based on the restrictions of the site. Uh, we are attempting to show some strict delineation of the entry points of the building. But as you may well know, visiting the site, we're very restricted there and grade is going to become very critical there. So we're willing to put forth some type of designation.
So it's more a flush condition?
It is a very.
I was going to say. Flaws.
Yeah.
Like in another.
Yeah.
They get clipped all the time.
Yeah, yeah, this, this site has admittedly been challenged with its connectivity to the street as well as the sidewalk introduction. But I think that this plan and an extensive amount of back and forth with the engineering department, I think we feel as though we have put together a, um, a opportunity to introduce elements such as the sidewalks uh, for pedestrian safety. And these delineations, which I would classify as striping at those locations that you noted.
So the material, your sidewalk is concrete and the material in the semicircles is part of the asphalt?
That is straight, is that it? Okay. That's just, we're going right up to the physical black top of the street.
I didn't see a print, so I thought this is.
There's no green space ability there between sidewalk and road.
Make sure I said what I was seeing.
That would be the case also with Grove Street. Once again, a challenge. Um, we, we were informed at the last meeting that there was an opportunity to work with DPW to put that sidewalk in there. And it seemingly would maybe infringe on the road a little bit. But we're going to work with the DPW, make a distinct delineation between sidewalk and the paved area. And feel very comfortable that we can work with DPW in order to make that happen.
If C1, um, still has the bollards for the existing meters shown, but not called out, are those being removed?
Yeah, we're, we're in negotiations. Yeah, on Grove Street, as per the last meeting, we were asked to investigate the relocation of the meter. And we're in the process of that. We feel as though that the gas company would allow us to relocate that meter, which would be the removal of the bollards.
So, um, where in that discussion, has it been decided that a meter would be?
There hasn't been any definitive, but we're assuming it's going to be on the southeast corner of the property. And located in the, um, on private property, just to the south of the east corner of the building. And that is going to be determined by the, um, gas company's designer in terms of exactly where it can be put. But we express our concerns with this board and the DPW regarding current location being the right of way.
Okay, and are you planning any other visible utilities on this building? Like any other exterior electric boxes or any kind of split systems?
No, any condensers associated with the HDAC, as stated in prior meetings, would be located on loop of the structure and non-violent to ground.
And they will be shielded from view?
They will be screened from view, um, to the extent of the height of the units, um, and, and not visible from the street.
And that's accomplished by the existing exterior wall being somewhat of a parapet or is there?
No, we're going to locate the, um, condenser units to the center or rear property. When I say rear, I mean rear from West Spring Street, minimize its actual visibility. And we probably, if needed, will provide some actual screening interior in order to prevent any direct visibility of those mechanical units.
And why are you proposing a screen material?
I would propose to do like a vinyl fence type material unless this board was suggested of another material that might be more appropriate.
How tall would you think these units are?
Not more than three feet. So line of sight.
You've got to be a long way back to see it.
Yeah, you'd have to be literally up the hill on the other side of the road to see them.
Yeah.
Or maybe coming down on Grove, because you know that, that is a pretty big, uh, grade change. But from Spring Street and from the main part of this, you won't be able to see it based on their location.
Can you add those to revised plan?
Pardon?
Can you add that to the revised plan, to a revised plan?
They will be represented in the architectural plans, because we haven't designed the HDAC yet for exact location. So if you wanted to reference, we wouldn't typically put that on a site plan. We could put it on, uh, condition to the plant, the building plans. Because that's where our HDAC would be represented. It's not on the site anywhere, it's on top of the building.
That's what I was asking.
Yep, we can do that, for sure.
Okay, so we don't have topographic plans. And I understand David's question about what we thought were once curbs and now are striping.
Yeah. We were opposing.
Why are they there? I mean, it seems like we're, we're just striping the street now, so why are they there?
So they were originally planned as curbs. Uh, the, the problem was when we introduced the sidewalk. Uh, we couldn't get the depression and the proper ADA compliance for those. So they become, um, ineffective in terms of raised curves. And we felt as though this board was still wanting some type of delineation and that was our solution. If you feel they're inappropriate in terms of just striping the, uh, the road, I would have no problem with suggesting that they wouldn't be installed. Uh, but we cannot put raised curves to these locations.
Even on Grove Street, is the side, are you, I mean, just for discussion sake, are you proposing a raised sidewalk on Grove Street to meet the village code?
I would think that on Grove Street, we would have a curb sidewalk.
Okay.
And we will be working with DPW on that. It's really dependent on grades and conditions, because we're going to be coming into the physical road. And I would assume that those would be curved. But I would need to clarify that with DPW. We're willing to do the install as per their standards.
And so if, if, and that was my impression as well, was Wes, they were thinking raised curb on Grove. So making that transition to West Spring, just so we can talk about whether the striping is really necessary or not as part of the site plan. You go from a raised curb and you're thinking it dead ends as it makes the curve.
A raised curb would have to diminish at the corner of Grove and West. Even though the sidewalk in itself will not be ADA compliant because of the steepness of the slope. We are obligated to put a transitional, um, sensor strip as well as a reduction in the curb. So that would bring us from curb sidewalk down to a smooth condition. Smooth condition would turn west and go down West Spring Street.
Right.
But those, those four islands still show a curve on your site plan?
It makes it very confusing.
Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're designed to be some type of indicator, but they can't be raised curves.
They want to just be concrete that's flush and a little bump out of the sidewalk?
Well, I mean, this is for, for, for DPW to make that decision.
No, this is, I'm, this is on West Spring Street. Instead of striping those. Instead of striping that area of blacktop, a little arc around concrete that's flush with the blacktop. Or if you even need anything there.
An option, I don't know how effective that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, if you're not going to do, if it's all flush, I don't know why you need the striping here.
I don't know.
Yeah, I would.
It just seemed awkward to strike into the street.
Yeah, I agree.
I just don't see it.
Yeah.
If it was like a high graffiti, you'd get a visual heads up from people or something, but I just don't see it.
Yeah.
So we're, we're.
But then how do you, I would ask, how do you separate the sidewalk from the pavement? There's no grass panel between.
No. It's a.
The street and the sidewalk, which is why curved sidewalks or those curved islands were going to be the vertical separation from the traveling and pedestrian sidewalk.
If that were the goal, then maybe you should just stripe along the edge of the sidewalk, but the.
Stripe along the right-of-way line.
Yeah, the, the things coming out are not doing that.
We need the right-of-way.
Not to let any sidewalk, so.
That would probably be the village's responsibility.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think that that's appropriate for the site plan unless anybody agrees. So we would take off this striping in the street along West Spring Street. So remove that from A1. And the condition will be for the variances then asphalt sidewalk, asphalt in the street.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Okay. And C1? On C1?
Yeah.
All right, anyone else have any other comments, questions, continuing? Nope, seeing none. Okay, then, um, I would propose a waiver per section 112-16 at 20. That indicates the first floor facade between three and 10 feet above grade needs to be 70% building transparency. Obviously, as proposed on Sorry, about, um, A2. That is not, do you know the percentage that you have for transparency?
It's much less than.
Well, on the new building, it looks like, let's see, between 10 feet, I don't have any dimes there. Well, it looks like you're probably at like 10%, right? So, um.
I would say it would be an approximate, but a very close approximation.
So I would say that my, my, my request or my motion for a waiver is based on the, um, the special use permit that was given to the property by the zoning board of appeals. For manufacturing use and hence the building utilizes garage doors. And instead of transparency in this location, um, the facade and the applicants did include, um, windows above those garage doors as requested by, by this board during sketch plan review. So I've made a motion, do I have a second? By Wes, all in favor?
Aye.
So that waiver was granted six to zero. Then moving on to a motion for the building. So we've been given a draft resolution which we've had some occasions to. Can everyone deal that needs, well, I guess it does. Well, we can do part of it now. I need to get a sketch report. Lighting is actually going to fall, uh, is it fall under architectural review?
It's all.
Do you have any site lighting?
It's all utilizing the architectural lighting.
Okay.
It's all covered by that.
So the resolution is for log 20 20, 2025 PB02 for 27 West Spring Streets for site plan review. Whereas at the meeting held on February 3rd, 2023, and March 3rd, 2020, I'm sorry, 2025, and March 3rd, 2025, the Village of Williamsville Planning Board reviewed an application for site plan review for the proposed multifamily structure at 27 West Spring Streets. And whereas the planning board reviewed the application materials for the proposed project pursuant to the village zoning sections 11223E site plan review and 11216B landscaping. Planning Board reviewed the revised plans received on February 21st, 2025, drawings A1, A2, A3, A4, C1 and C2. And whereas understanding that a special use permit for manufacturing was granted by the zoning board of appeals on November 20, 2024. And whereas understanding area variances to the parking and building height standard were granted by the zoning board of appeals on February 19, 2025. Whereas in accordance with the criteria outlined in section 11223B site plan review and 11223B architectural review, the planning board, that's not right.
Yeah, E and F, I apologize. I will fix that. Architecture.
That's actually for architectural review, so that's not included in this motion. So.
Are you looking for two separate resolutions?
We do do two separate motions, two separate resolutions, yes. So, um, so just outlined in 11223E site plan review, the planning board is determined that the proposed project meets. the planning board is determined that the proposed project meets the applicable sections. Whereas, the project is classified as time to action in accordance with Part 617 of the implementing regulations between Article 8, the State Environmental Law Review of the Environmental Conservation Law, and requires no further review under seeker. And whereas, the planning board recommends to the village board that off-site sidewalk improvements on village right-of-way be designated and installed to the approval of the village DPW superintendent in accordance with Chapter 89 of the Village Code. Let it be resolved at the planning board in accordance with Section 7-725A of the New York State Law and 112, 23E of the Village of Williams Code. Grant site plan review, approval for the site plan as presented on the revised drawings received on February 21st, 2025, drawing C1 and C2 with the following conditions: That, the condition of the ZBAs special use permit granted on November 20, 2024, a fire alarm system tied to the fire department should be provided, and the details of which to be reviewed and approved by the village fire inspector. Two, that as a condition of the ZBAs area variance granted on February 19, 2025, the site plan be modified to include a note that two internal parking spaces will remain available for parking and not to be reutilized for other non-parking uses. Number three, the fire department knockbox, knock key box is required for access to the building's keys. Number four, that if the project is required to install fire sprinkler system, a site plan indicate, will indicate the location of the fire department connection for the sprinkler system, which must be located on the street side of the building. Number five, that the comments of the fire inspector, the village DPW superintendent, are addressed to their satisfaction prior to the issuance of the building permit. Number six, that the existing bollards along Grove Street and meter be moved from the right of way. And number seven, there is no site lighting. Does anyone have anything to add? So that is the first motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Wes, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. So now we go through our control review.
Thank you. So we also had an opportunity to present this bill from an architectural standpoint. Received a lot of comments over sketch plan review and subsequent planning board meetings. We have made some changes, not to the structure itself. The structure is pretty much the same, which you've seen. We did change the color. What we are proposing instead of that wrought iron darker color, which was supposed to black or charcoal, we are looking at Sherwin-Williams oat milk, which we would want to put down on the record. We feel that it allows us to create more, a better contrast between some of the architectural features. And that's really the only major or subsequent change. Couple of other items that did come up. We did put a little roof structure above the one overhead garage door. And that really helped, that side elevation. It became a nice architectural feature for the original building. And one thing I can say for clarity, and I do have copies of this too for each of the board members. Copies are a little, they came out a little different. Color, the contrasting color of the true color is a proposed black. It's not, on my print here that I was going to hand out, it has almost like a brown tint for it. We're looking for a true black with the oat milk contrast for a nice contrast in detail. Also, part of this proposal are the three roof decks along the West Spring Street side, or four, I should say. There's a reduced one of the lower overhead door there. There's also some additional lighting. It's for the recommendation of this board. Wall scones that's pointed downwards. It has like a reflector to it that just highlights those stairs for safety purposes. And there is proposed to be lighting, just general accent lighting underneath that introduction of that top, that piece above the garage door. And once again, just to remind the board, the Grove Street side, we were cleaning up and squaring off the building. It appeared that there was a triangulated portion of the building that was outside porch in major disrepair. We're planning on reestablishing that corner so that it's complete and maybe what it was originally intended to be. And the access to the apartment is through the stairs in the center of this illustration. It's lead you to a rooftop opportunity, which is used pretty much exclusively for the tenant. And we do have some planters and landscaping and whatnot, which would normally be under more scrutiny of this board if there were a commercial patio, outdoor patio. But we are suggesting that is going to be as part of the tenant space. So we don't have anything specifically defined, but we have given you a representation of that rooftop patio and what we envision it looking like. We also know that there is a indicator for signage above the door. We also know that this board is probably not in a position to approve that sign today. And we're prepared to put further investigation into the sign, come with a formal proposal, and ask for a site permit or a sign approval at that time in a subsequent meeting. And I think that that is a summary of all the architectural features for this project. And we respectfully request an approval today for architectural of this project.
So I've noticed that A2 does not have all the lighting that you're looking here. Can you please mark this up so it can be submitted as part of the record?
Can I, can I interrupt? If you mark up plans and we don't have the final plans, it might be more efficient down the road when we're trying to sort out what was approved, if you approve it with changes and then those changes be submitted. We don't, we didn't get the plans that Davis is describing now and showing you there is not what was submitted February 21st. Not that it would change my staff comments because I defer the architectural review to you, but it changes the resolution that specifies sheet numbers and dates. And if things get marked up by hand, they get lost. They're nowhere in the system. And I wouldn't have it. So when I get a call down the road, what was approved, I would very easily say, this is what was approved, what was submitted February 21st.
Good point.
Well, then you can just submit lighting for another meeting.
No, I don't think it needs to come back for another meeting. I think we need to know what plan is in front of you to be approved. And if you want to approve it with changes, that would go into a motion and a resolution.
What I would like to offer the board is to suggest the presentation as represented within the rendering. And I will gladly update the elevation drawings to submit to the board formally that represents what was presented today in the second meeting.
And you've got a copy of this.
I frankly would prefer him to. I mean, the only thing that's changing is the location of, that there's some missing lights.
So if you mark it up, can we still ask for it?
Yeah.
In a, finally.
Then you know what you're looking for when it comes in. We're representing the same thing.
This is going to be exhibit A for the motion. And he's going to mark it up because we don't do renderings. We've gotten caught with that.
But that markup doesn't go to the building department to issue building plans?
No, he has to reissue, he has to reissue the sheet with the markup.
Then we'll compare it.
Yep.
And it goes back to what we discussed earlier. If it doesn't significantly match what the chair is marking up, then I'd say I can't recommend it.
Right, right.
Permits be taken. All right.
So you're going to mark up A2? Is that, is A2 the only one that's changing?
Yes.
So I have a couple of questions on that. So, Gabe, the heights of the garage doors, all on the elevations on A2, all appear to be the same height. But on the rendering, the showroom, I think it is, is down lower. And the, above the man door, the entrance door, there isn't enough room for that sign on the elevation.
These are really short. In fact, this whole building is short.
The building is the right height, the doors. If all four doors, garage doors seem to be the same height on the elevation. And then the gooseneck lights are very close to the top of the garage door.
Right, the goosenecks, which they're all represented here on the drawings. It just would be real short.
Yeah, I got you.
And then the man door and the other garage door are the same height. Oh, no, they're different to one thing.
Right, they're a little bit different.
Is that, is that a standing metal seam roof over the leftmost garage door?
It is.
That's got to be on the new drawing too. I mean, I guess this is a, this little red.
There is a feature there.
And then one last question. Is the apartment entrance that's set back, that appears to be in shadow on the rendering, is that? And it appears to be maybe hardyboard planks or some kind of a sign, horizontal siding. Is that also the, oh, the blonde color?
Yeah.
Or is it, is it dark?
It would, it would, we would prefer it to be the oat milk. Everything, oat milk, sorry. Everything is oat milk. Sherwin-Williams oat milk with the exception of the accents of the black.
Okay.
So you still have lights in the scene? So you don't show the wall pack upstairs?
Wall pack comes here. These are all here.
And are you showing another wall pack of the termination, the landing of the stair?
Do you want to show it before the site board is through?
It's good.
Well, we're going to come back for that.
I know, but it's so, she just went for post-site board and then the lights are consistent with it. Then is there, is there any metal seam roof? Is there, is there a light included underneath that roof now?
Yeah, we were going to highlight that, but some down lighting, which would not be visible.
It would shine next to it.
Yeah, it would be sopit lighting.
Okay, so everything else is black, including the guardrails, the stairs, the shutters. I said there are new windows, are they black as well?
Correct. Every trim on it is black. With that nice clean contrast.
Could you note that on the plan? That would, that way.
I am, yeah.
On the plan? Green.
On the architectural.
Yeah, that makes it, that makes it a lot easier for us to have a document to confirm when building permits are being issued.
Yep. So that little feature is in on this? Are those, is that all black or striped? It's black. That's just shadow on your scene. It's a black standing seam. We actually played with that a little bit so that you could see that it was a standing seam roof. It's very tricky with some of these programs. They don't have exactly what I want, but.
So we're never quite does what you want.
To be honest with you, black trim is very challenging. Black color is very challenging in the renderings because all the detail kind of disappears, which is unfortunate.
Yeah, because there's no colonial monouns in the double on there, that's right.
Two copies of it, yeah. Three copies. Give one to him. The original. Copy, 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 got it.
Looking through the architectural consistency review on page three of the staff report on item number eight. So obviously, there are inconsistencies, but this is, again, a special use permit for manufacturing building is given as well as there is an existing portion of the building. And the entire building has an exterior material of a building base. There's a delineation of material as one moves vertically up the wall. Signage is being excluded. Is this, is that, this is an asphalt roof? And?
The pitched roof, the existing roof is an asphalt roof. The architectural feature of that little shed roof above the overhead door is a standing seam metal roof, black. And the remainder of the roof or the addition would be APDM rubber roof, black roof.
Need to put anything on that roof, on the part of the roof where you're going to be walking? Or just?
Yeah, we actually put down a rubber rooftop paper.
Paper, that's a, that's a roof.
Yeah.
And lighting then is only going on the north elevation and then at the rail on the east elevation. So I, I think we're comfortable with lights village because they're literally at the, um, copper lighting.
Right.
So I think we're comfortable with that. Totally the sidewalk. So we won't deal with that this evening. All right. Any other comments or questions? I can make a motion regarding log 2025 PBO2, 27 West Spring Street for architectural review. With the drawing A2, A3 as submitted, with the following modifications identified on exhibit A. As submitted as part of this motion, that the exterior wall paint be Sherwin-Williams oat milk, all trim, lighting fixtures, railings, guard shutters, and window frames to be black. That the height of the two overhead doors on the west side of west side of the north elevation are actually taller than depicted here in the original A two, but modified in red ink by the architect to show the actual location. That gooseneck lighting will be provided above all
Doors.
Doors, man doors, and garage doors on the addition that, um, down lighting be provided above the overhead door on the existing building under a black stainless steel roof as drawn in red on A two or exhibit two for exhibit A. That the existing building had a new asphalt roof in black. That there are two wall packs lighting the stair to the existing building's second floor as indicated on red on A two as part of exhibit A. Signage is not included in this approval. And whereas the planning board in accordance with the criteria outlined in section one twelve twenty three F for architectural review determine that the proposed project meets the applicable design objectives in section one twelve sixteen A through sixteen through section one twelve sixteen I. As much as is appropriate as it was deemed a manufacturing, or it was, it was given a variance by the zoning reporting appeals to be a manufacturing building. What's that? Or they were given a specially used permit, um, to be used as a manufacturing building on November twentieth, twenty twenty four. Whereas in accordance with one twelve twenty three H, the planning board granted a waiver on March third, twenty twenty five to the seventy percent building transparency requirement in section one twelve sixteen F three for the first floor facade between three feet and ten feet above grade. Then moving back to conditions, that the rooftop equipment or the, the HVAC equipment, the exterior HVAC equipment will be located on the roof towards the south end of the building of the, the new building addition. There will be no split systems located on exterior walls. And that is it. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sophie.
I think I'd like to present the signage for the team.
Oh, you're another, okay.
But also. Sophie's gonna give you a copy of the markup. We all have the same. And then we will all have the same one.
So one's for, one's for a store and one's for the building.
So now moving on to.
Here's two different.
Twenty twenty five PBO three fifty eight seventy seven Main Street for the exterior salon sign permit.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Dave Sutton from Sutton Architects here today to present signage for exterior salon spa. That's fifty eight seventy seven Main Street, as well as some signage representative for the building in branding of Williams Place, uh, the, I'll just call it the northeast corner of the building. So first and foremost, Salon Experia, as you all know, the fifty eight seventy seven project is nearing completion. My, my friend Paul, who's with us this evening, can answer any questions regarding the salon. But he is nearing completion and ready to open and anxious to put a sign up. You'll see the signage represented here in the existing sign panel that was previously reviewed and approved by the board. It's important to note that the exterior signage is very much in compliance with our unified sign plan. It's exactly the same, it's the same, the lighting, the garden that we've even approved, the sign panel, the drawing, the origin, color. Already done, reviewed and approved. We're here today basically to talk about the specific signage. It's gonna be a vinyl applied directly to the sign panel. I do have a sample of the material if you'd like to see it. It's proposed to be white. It's pretty standard in terms of the signage, direct apply, no interior lighting at all. It's all illuminated by the gooseneck light that they're already installed. The signage you're looking at on screen is located, uh, the top one is on Main Street and the, um, bottom one is located in the parking lot, uh, in the already designated area for the signage for the specific suite of the building in the far northwest or west corner of the building, which is where the main entrance is to be located for Salon Experia. So that, those are the signage being proposed for that. And then we are proposing an additional sign. You have that? Yeah, right there, which is above the next year bank sign, which is the corner, the northeast corner of the building.
Let's handle that one. Let's, let's do the exterior first.
And the blade sign also.
The blade sign as well.
Those will be for you.
The projecting sign.
And then I do need a little clarification on the blade sign too, because we're, we're very much prepared to present it, but in prior meetings there was a discussion that the blade sign may or may not need formal approval from the planning board.
I believe Mark made a determination that he could issue those because they were on the architectural plans and they're within.
Sign officers.
I think it's pretty easy. You know, we, we talked about the location of them already, the height of them, the brackets, the sign panel itself, the nature of construction. And today we're just representing the signage or the logo and glad to present it as part of our overall supplemental today. Whether it needs an approval or not, I'll let this board decide that.
Well, Mark decided, so.
Yep.
We don't have to review that.
Thank you for that clarification.
So then just dealing with the twenty eight by one ten exterior salon and spa sign as to put it on the application. Does anyone have, so can we pass around the material, please? And how, what's the, um, what's the install method?
Just have a, okay, before they ask me a question.
Right, so. So how are they gonna do that?
I think on the application.
It does say exactly what it comes in set, however, how are they gonna do that? You tell me, because I don't believe it.
Yeah, they're all concealed fasciners. I mean, the sign.
So it's glued up there is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, basically, you know, it's, it's, you know. Yeah, you know, it's, it's very similar to the signs that were already approved and installed up in the next year bank. We're very happy with how they turned out in terms of the install, quality of the install. We expect the same, uh, with, with this install. No visible fasciners, um, direct apply and, you know, assuring us a high quality install.
I have a question from the history standpoint, first approvals, because I provide a next year, I'm like here and without the name, just looking at the fact that they're, they will lit.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it has that. So this one would, would only be lit, only be lit by.
Exterior illumination only, no backlight.
That was just because of the paint.
Was it because it was on the corner?
Yeah, in actuality, we, we presented it as backlight and we felt that that would be a better, uh, a better application to give it a little backlight glow. And hindsight, how that we see it with the exterior lighting of the gooseneck, we actually prefer it not to be backlight at all, so we're gonna recommend that for any future signage. The more successful sign for next year as well as for Experia, it's one hundred percent exterior illumination with the, uh, with the goosenecks.
I mean, we have that problem down the street of, wherever it is.
Fifty seven twelve.
Yeah. Fifty seven twelve, where one of the four tenants is chose not to be backlight and it looks ridiculous. So, um, you know, you being the second tenant, that kind of puts you at a disadvantage if it's deemed, they all need to be the same now.
Yeah, well, next year on their Main Street signage is actually not backlight. It's only the gooseneck, it's only on the corner that we did the, um, illumination. And any other tenant that would go in this building now would be external illumination only to make sure we have a unified plan. Oh.
But there is gooseneck lighting above the banks.
That's right. Can you go back to the next year sign that was on the other, the next one?
Oh, it's forward, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, it's connecting.
The signage looks great during the day. I like the onset. I like how it stands out. It's just the backlight of next year competes with the exterior illumination of the goosenecks. So we're, we're not going to be doing that for any other signage.
Can you turn off the backlight at night?
Good question. We're actually with.
Tab on the bulbs?
Yeah. We're, we're walking, we're going next year right now. I'm gonna meet with them in the evening and convince them that they look better suited with all the, uh, actual illumination on it.
Well, we can make it easier for you and just say, that line has to go off if you want all the rest not to be backlight. I mean.
Yeah.
We can make it real easy for you. I mean, I mean, I really, I mean, I wanted to deal with these two separately because we're you've got building lighting on either side of the Williams Place sign and now you're proposing, um, halo for that too and it's.
Those are the, the lighting on either side, those are wall washers. They're accenting the brick, right? And we don't have any, um, illumination competing with the signage that we're proposing.
But I don't think you do at limestone lots either.
I think the, I can't comment about limestone lots, but the limestone loft sign I think is somewhat successful over there.
It is, and you did it. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's lit internally, halo lit.
Oh, yeah, it's backlight.
The limestone loft is backlight?
I'm swan.
All right. Well, how does the board feel about another building with? Let's just deal with the signboard.
Yeah.
First.
Let's get them.
So next year has already set the precedent of, of halo. And now we have another applicant before us this evening who is saying no halo and the rest won't be halo.
So, but the next year sign that faces on Main Street is not halo, is not halo. So if you're looking at the front of this building, okay, as a cruciate, a corner of the building.
Right.
If you're looking at the front of the building, it does not help you have a mix of sign types. Right, they're very unified.
If there are additional tenants, I recommend an overall building, um, view for with the approved signage to date on whoever.
Yeah, we do have, in, in the architectural approval, we did put suggestion of signage and sign panels. Uh, we can go back and introduce those. I mean, we're very interested in making sure that this building has a unified kind of feel to it. So we have no problem when we do our next supplemental, we'll do the whole elevation with all the signage on it. I'll just have to collaborate that because obviously the individual doing this sign won't kind of have access to sign that somebody else did to put together that document, but we probably do it. There's only, just, just for the board's information, there's only one more tenant moving into this building. Now we have two thousand square feet lot, so there's gonna be one more tenant down here next year. The rest of the building is one hundred percent up, but.
Okay, and as far as the sign goes for size, does it need waiver or is it's approval?
No, it's approval. One reason why Mark sent both sets of signs to you is because the architectural plans that Dave just referenced, you just referenced. Show signage. We don't have a good chunk of code that describes what a sign plan is or a unified sign plan, coordinated sign plan. It was understood from the information we could find in the records that that's what you did when you approved the architectural review, which is why Mark said, well, then it stays in the planning board.
Right, designated.
If, I believe that if sign boards are shown and the type of sign is shown and the type of lighting is shown, it shouldn't have to come in the planning board. But I don't know if, if Mark felt that all that, that level of detail wasn't on the architectural plan. So in the future, when you.
In the future, we need to talk about lighting then at that time.
If, if you wanna call it, yes, if you wanna call it the sign plan for this building, then we need to go in a little bit more detail at that time. Or we just bring every sign into it. Either way, one, one way or the other, you'll see.
Right. So I think we're looking for similar materials, definitely the same, whether it's backlight or externally, or externally illuminated only, um, consistency. Okay, any other questions, comments on the exterior sign? Just the signboard now, sign.
The two sign. The two side panels, one of the one.
Let's just deal with them one at a time. So we can start first.
Okay.
Okay, any questions?
No.
Nope, okay. Um, and they're exactly the same size?
They are, same size panel, same size lettering, same dimensions proportions.
All right, so anyone gonna make a motion or might? Perfect. Make a motion for twenty twenty five PBO three fifty eight seventy seven Main Street exterior salon for a sign permit for the Main Street sign to be approved as submitted. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
So also log twenty twenty five PBO three fifty eight seventy seven Main Street exterior salon sign permit for the sign in the year parking lot. So it's a motion to approve as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. So those two are done. So now we'll move on to the Williams Place sign. So can you describe exactly where it is?
So the, the Williams Place sign, which is the branding for the building itself, is thirty four by seventy two. It'll be located in the designated area between the second and third floor windows at a forty five degree angle of the building, which is facing northeast. And we are proposing. And we are proposing a backlit halo type light consideration there. And it's not competing with any exterior gooseneck lights to have its highlighting, we feel it's gonna be very appropriate. And be a nice feature and an attraction architecturally, as well as a nice branding for the building at this time.
So are the letters halo lit and then?
Yeah, every, everything that is white is halo lit and the brown, which matches the sign panel is the back.
There's a, there's a raised brick accent running behind the sign. And how does the sign work dimensionally with your vision?
There's, what we'll be doing is creating a continuous mountain, so like a double thick. Where the raised brick accent isn't and then it'll be flushed at the brick accent. So that will be a nice tight detail up against the brick at all occasions.
So you said everything backlit? This says a Williams place, it's not backlit, it's just the letters.
Sorry, just the W P logo.
W P and then the line, the white line.
Well, that's better. And the lighting is going to be the same. Color as the downlights and the goosenecks correct for the halo.
And the same.
The same color texture.
Halo also.
Same, it'll be the same hue, I'm gonna see if we can do this same texture. See if we can get it so it's actually adjustable, which many of them are now, so we can actually get them to match instead of being really the sole source lighting system.
Dave, can I ask you the window that's directly underneath where the sign is, how wide is that window?
That window is six feet long, approximately, so that sign panel is intended to match the window.
And then it's mounted. Vertically centered on the.
Equally spaced. So will the W P have the same kind of projection as the next year's projection of their white lighting? The actual depth of the projection, I'm not sure of, but I would assume it would be approximately the same depth in order for that halo effect to be able to be in full effect.
Any other questions? Make motion for twenty twenty five P B O four fifty eight seventy seven Main Street Williams Place sign permit. As submitted, previous submitted the following clarifications. That the. Sign will be continuously mounted, that the sign will be equally spaced vertically between the window above and below and the same as the windows. That the halo lighted portion of the sign, the same color temperature as the exterior. Lights on the entire building as well as the next year bank halo, halo lit sign. Is there a second?
Can I?
Yes.
There's a waiver involved with this one, because the sign board area, this is not a sign board, but the sign is above the second floor. Sideboard area is supposed to be between the first floor and the bottom of the second floor window.
You found it.
You found it, I knew it was there, I couldn't find it.
I asked it earlier, I'm like, is it?
No, we knew there was a waiver, I just couldn't find where it was, so that waiver is, is in accordance with eighty four dash five C four. And it's a waiver to the. Sign placement standard. It's kind of in a, it's in the wrong place, it's not under wall.
The placement does not actually restrict the location of the sign board area, but the definite sign board area has a placement restriction in it.
This is what we worked out in the evening.
Pause that, we're gonna go back to a waiver first, so pause that, that is the motion, it will remain the motion and we'll go back for a second, pause that. So first. I would propose a waiver from section eighty four dash five C four for sign place, in the sign placement standard. For this sign, based on that this is not signage for tenants, this is a building identification signage. Piece that is using, being used as an architectural feature, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Going back on topic for the motion that was previously made, do I have a second or does it need to be reiterated?
I'll second.
Seconded by Colleen, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, especially.
This is Dave's.
Yeah, he needs that.
Um, does anyone have any other business for signing for this evening? Everyone filled out their ethics sheet and handed it in. Sure. Well, come on, let's, let's move to the meeting, so why don't, so make motion to adjourn, a second? Seconded, or David, while they can talk. So all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero, and then so the video, I'll hit go off.
That was me, kill this.
Pardon?
It's either lost in these folders or.
Unbook shelf, you can have my stats.
That was written.
For a sign and then I'm like, great, they got the sign. And I'm like, that's not even where the sign was to go, so I put a historical notice.
You have to, you have to stop and walk away with changes. They change the plans, they can't prove the plans if they don't have the plans. No, it's not, this is the, but this is the shit that Mark and I and Carol spend hours and hours and hours a week looking for the approved plans. That's why we never have the approved plans. They should, they should have made him walk away. Can't bring new plans. He had a month, he had a month to bring in the plans, you can't bring in new plans.